Welcome, everybody, to the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County General Election Candidate Forum for Edgewood City Council Positions 3, 4, and 6. Position 5 is uncontested. I am Lydia Zapata, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and the audience to this community candidate forum. The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tohoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that we do this. Anyone who is 16 years or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information about the League of Women Voters, go to our website, which is www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. The candidates tonight, in ballot order, are for Position 3, Kristi Keith and Joshua Shulkind; for Position 4, Roseanne Tomlin and Rick Winifred; for Position 6, Erica Buckley and Colleen Wise. Rick Winifred did not respond to multiple requests to participate. This year's general election is on November 2nd. If you are not yet registered or have moved, you may register at votewa.gov. That's votewa.gov by October 25th. You should receive your ballot by October 18th if you are a registered voter. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM on November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at our website. Again, that's www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our co-sponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to 206-310-8965. That's 206-310-8965. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Please send your questions to 206-310-8965. Our timekeeper today is Terri Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let the candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when it's time to stop. When you see the red stop card, you may finish a short sentence, but please don't push it. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper, Terri Baker. Please do not talk unless it's your turn, and please mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected, and I ask you each to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which, among other things, include addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Please confirm by giving me the thumbs up. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate that. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the very end, each candidate can make a one-minute closing statement. So the order of two-minute statements, opening statements, is in ballot order. So we'll start with Kristi Keith, and then Joshua Shulkind, and then Roseanne Tomlin, then Erica Buckley, and then Colleen Wise. So Kristi, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Lydia. I'm Kristi Keith. I'm running for Position 3 for Edgewood City Council. I'm a longtime management consultant, nonprofit, and business leader, and I specialize in change management and turnaround. So I have lots of experience moving large institutions into a new direction and breaking down the change into small achievable pieces, making sure that everyone involved understands what needs to happen, when it needs to happen. And I believe that these skills can be applied to a city council position, especially in a city such as Edgewood where we have large growth ahead of us, and that growth will have to be managed very carefully so that we maintain our small community feel and maintain the beautiful, wonderful place to live, work, and play. I cede my time.
Thank you. Josh?
There. Thank you. Thanks for having me on tonight. It's good to be here. I am running for Edgewood City Council Position Number 3, and I'm running because I was really prompted by the pandemic that a lot of people are experiencing isolation, a lot of people are alone. I've had 25 years of nonprofit leadership experience, as well as I've worked in government. I was elected to HOAs, really been involved in my community, and it broke my heart to see that. So I really wanted to get up and get involved and jump in with two feet. So here I am, being able to get involved and work alongside people. I'm really excited about getting involved in my community as I continue to be involved, whatever happens with this election, and I hope to serve the people of Edgewood well.
Thank you. Roseanne, please.
Thank you. My name is Roseanne Tomlin. I am running for reelection in Position 4 of the Edgewood City Council. This is my second time running for my seat. I am a mother of two children growing up in this community. My husband is a local educator. I have a vested interest in maintaining the character of Edgewood and that it continues to be the great place that we all enjoy living. That includes roping the community in consistently and expanding communication and community connections so that everybody's at the table when big decisions come up, like development, you know, what we're doing to facilitate needs and access to services. My goal has always been increased connection, increased citizen involvement, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue in that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, please.
Thank you. I'm Erica Buckley, and I'm running for Edgewood City Council Position 6. This will be my first time running for any elected office, but I'm doing it basically from a spirit of volunteerism that I've had my whole life. My husband and I are choosing to raise our four young kids in this community, and I wanted to do something meaningful and give my time, my resources, to the people that I want to do life with, which is our Edgewood neighbors. I believe that I'm representative of a lot of the people that are newer to Edgewood. I'm happy that we chose this community, and I want to bring more people into the fold and make sure that everyone feels included and feels like their family can thrive here. And so I would be the one to ask a lot of questions, to be extremely accessible to everyone, and to just give everything I have to try and help Edgewood thrive even more than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen? You're muted.
Dear, I thought I had unmuted. Thank you. I'm Colleen Wise. I'm running for Edgewood City Council Position Number 6. I am running for reelection. I was elected in 2020 after being appointed by the current city council in 2019. I am from this community. I've been in this community for years and have loved it. From the day, many, many days in the past, I've served on the council from 2001 to 2005 as well. I'm expecting and hoping to do this again. We've worked so hard on the council this year and the last few years for planning and direction with our citizen committees and all the efforts that we have to bring our people to connectivity through town hall meetings. We've tried, of course, the coffee with council, which has been somewhat successful. And then, of course, our magazine that goes out every quarter. So there's a lot of ways that we've worked on connectivity. I want to continue that. I love our town hall meetings and hope that that can continue. I also enjoy our citizen committees as well. I was raised here in Edgewood. I live with my mom not too far away. I lived in my own home for 28 years, and I'm just asking for your vote, and thank you very much for this time.
Thank you all. Now we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer each question. For some questions, I will indicate 60 seconds. Again, if the audience would like to text questions, they can text them to 206-310-8965. That's 206-310-8965. The candidate order will rotate with each question. So for question number one, we'll start with Josh, and then we'll go Roseanne, Erica, Colleen, and Kristi. So the first question is, "Edgewood has experienced rapid growth, especially since 2016. What are your priorities for future development in Edgewood? Speak specifically about density and housing affordability and the Growth Management Act." So speak specifically about density and housing affordability and the Growth Management Act. Josh?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think my priorities really are, like a lot of the other candidates said, is really the community, to continue to build a sense of community. I would love to see a community of sidewalks, of a town square, a town center, a place where retail, more retail, so there's a walkable community where people can hang out, build relationships, where people can be involved and in their community, there's events and things going on. I want to make sure that we have the infrastructure so that we'll be able to do that and that also we really address some of the business needs and of growing our retail here in Edgewood. I think those things, when we're talking about affordable housing and density, I think we do need to have different types of housing to really meet the needs of people that are coming in. So we need to make sure that we are both intentional, that we maintain our community character, but also that we are providing ways for people to come in in different types of housing. And so that might look like, obviously, single-family homes, which are, we have a lot of in Edgewood, but also things like apartments, townhomes, condos, and different ways where people can be close to community center. And I believe that as we begin to do that, that will attract more people and will continue to keep up with the Growth Management Act.
Thank you. Roseanne?
Would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. "Edgewood has experienced rapid growth since 2016. What are your priorities for further development in Edgewood? Speak specifically about density and housing affordability and the Growth Management Act."
Okay. So the city has a comprehensive plan that really lays out the long-term goals for connectivity when you're talking about sidewalks and access to public spaces, park spaces, additional and arterial road network that connects folks that live in Edgewood off of the main thoroughfares of Meridian, you know, that are passed through for a good portion of the day. We need to really lean heavily on that plan and continue to engage the public as we update that plan because as long as all Edgewood residents are able to be at the table and leveraged in that space, I think we can collectively make sure that we're reflecting where Edgewood has come from and the character of Edgewood while we also make Edgewood increasingly more accessible and we keep up with growth management demands. And they are demands. We do have to keep up with, you know, the requirements that the Growth Management Act establishes for our development. We do know we're going to grow, but the most important part of that process is being at the table for that growth. And as long as we're at the table and engaged, we can guarantee that the development that's going on still reflects not only the history and the goals of Edgewood long-term, but reflects the needs of the community as we grow.
Thank you. Erica?
From what I understand of the Growth Management Act, the best plan is to keep density closer to Meridian, and that involves, you know, building apartment complexes and bringing larger groups of people on the smaller pieces of land where there's already better access to transportation and more services that people can access easily without having such a huge traffic impact on our smaller surface streets. I think that housing affordability is the challenge for every community in our region, and Edgewood is not immune from that. A lot of the growth that's going on is simply not affordable for the majority of people that choose to live here. And so I think that has to be addressed with the types of variety of, you know, housing that is brought in and that is built here. But I think that the number-one important thing to do is to educate the residents of Edgewood on what those parameters of the Growth Management Act are and explain to people why growth is going to happen and why it's actually a good thing that there are apartments going in on Meridian versus spread out throughout of Edgewood. And so I think the conversations and the education with the residents is number-one priority for me.
Thank you. Colleen?
Thank you very much. Yes, the Growth Management Act is an act that we do have to pay very, very close attention to because it is the mandate by the state to the cities. There was also some bills in the legislature this last year that were passed that also imply that we are going to have to do some more things to increase our density and try to provide for the low income and extreme-low income, maybe not specifically in Edgewood, certainly with every effort to do that, to allow for the densities that would give us those structures. We do have about 11 cities right now that have signed on to a program in Pierce County that will work together to find those avenues to help our city and others out in this process. So I think that we want, as a city, to be concerned and open to all those avenues and definitely staying connected to our citizens so that they get the information and understanding. One of my passions has been the parallel road systems, allowing citizens to be able to get from outside of the area, like I call it the hinterlands, so that would be outside of the Meridian corridor, that they'd be able to get to businesses or homes near Meridian on a parallel road without being on Meridian. So that's one of my passions, and I'll keep working that as long as we can continue to work with zoning and other issues that will bring density to Edgewood in a constructive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi?
Thank you, Lydia. I think that the Growth Management Act is something that we have to continually make sure that we understand and plan for the future. The reason that it's so important is because it dictates our growth and puts caps on how we do that. Our strategy thus far has been a good one. We have a comprehensive plan that keeps the denser areas near the Meridian Core. We're at a density of 4 right now. They'd like us to be at a 6, and we're able to balance that by holding the apartment growth on Meridian as opposed to in the more rural areas of the city. That causes some people some worry because they think that, you know, there's lots of apartments everywhere. But the apartments are part of the density strategy so that we maintain our ability to grow and meet the Growth Management Act. As far as affordable housing, we all are aware, and many cities all over the nation are having the same issue. We will use the strategies of mixed-use housing, smaller units, higher density, and I'd also like to attract land trust to buy properties here in Edgewood to keep the land costs down for lower AMI families to help them build generational wealth.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Roseanne. And this is a 60-second question, Terri. So 60 seconds. The question is, "Speak to your experience in promoting equity through structural changes in institutions." Speak to your experience in promoting equity through structural changes in institutions. Roseanne?
Okay. I actually have experience currently. I'm serving on the EDI Subcommittee for the council, and what I'm working in conjunction with the rest of the committee and also doing myself is connecting with local organizations and leaders who are out doing the work to locate barriers and address them. And so this is, you know, diversity offices at our local schools. This is our community center that's serving seniors and children. These are counselors at schools. This is our local ECAP preschool. So I'm actually working to make these connections so that we can leverage the council space to identify what these structural issues are, what the barriers are, and leverage our privilege to address those and make sure that everybody, all Edgewood residents and all community residents are at the table.
Thank you. Erica?
I currently serve on the board of Treehouse, a nonprofit organization that's doing a lot of this work for kids that are experiencing foster care. So they're working with, you know, the school system. They're working with the foster care system. They're working with the state legislature and doing a lot of this work and identifying places where the system is broken and it's inherently unfair and trying to get to the root and to actually fix things at the root. In my own professional life, I represent individuals, the Davids, so to speak, against the Elias, and that's the way that I fight for equity on a person-by-person basis, trying to make a change in at least one person's life that can have a ripple effect across their whole family and community. So I do it in multiple ways currently.
Thank you. Colleen?
Thank you. I haven't had an opportunity to serve on the committee that the council has established, but we have been working very diligently and going through meetings and watching videos and paying attention to the whole EDI process and how it works and how to best bring our citizens into this process. My personal experience has been in affirmative action issues through working for a large company where we had a huge diverse population of citizen workers, I should say, and how best to work with them and make sure that our policies and so forth were not detrimental to that group, to any group of people anywhere. So I want to continue that with the city council and, of course, on a personal level, growing in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi?
Thank you, Lydia. I have spent four years doing a cultural turnaround with the Seattle Children's Museum when I arrived as the executive director. It was a majority-white staff and 100% white management. That was something that took the breaking down of every process in the entire organization, from how you hire, how you write the ad, from what your clothing policies are and your employee manual policies, to making sure that you're rooting out bias in the hiring and retention process. And over the course of four years, making small but significant changes, we moved the staff to almost half people of color and made great gains in gender imbalances as well as pay. And it's my experience that you attract people from all walks of life when it's a comfortable place for them to be.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, hi. I've gathered a lot of multicultural events at the colleges that I was at, being able to raise awareness around issues of race and class. And then I continued that work by, I actually lived with my family, was hired to live among families experiencing homelessness for five years. So I was helping them face various challenges of getting out of poverty and getting, being able to face some of the systemic issues, as well as I've continued that in my work at Pierce College and Clover Park in helping students begin to persist in college, graduate, and get employment. And I'm currently working at the Pialat Food Bank. So I have several years of helping people face a lot of challenges to navigate systems out there and issues of race and class to be able to move further ahead in their life and in their career.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Erica, and it will be 90 seconds. Effective July 25, 2021, the city cannot prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones in which residential dwellings or hotels are allowed. And for the audience, transitional housing refers to temporary accommodation to bridge the gap from homelessness to permanent housing. And permanent housing, permanent supportive housing is subsidized housing that offers structure, supervision, support for addictions and mental health if needed, life skills, and in some cases, additional education and training. How should the city of Edgewood address these two types of housing needs, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing? Erica?
I'm currently not aware of any plans of the city of Edgewood to have this type of housing in our city limits. And so it might be a question that would be better suited for one of our larger neighbors, you know, such as Tacoma or Federal Way. I believe that the city of Edgewood should make every effort possible to support all of the residents, especially the vulnerable and especially those who are struggling and trying to improve their stations in life and improve their family's outcomes. I'm not sure that this is actually an answer for our small city of Edgewood. However, I believe that when addressing issues of homelessness, poverty, even drug addiction, that public-private partnerships work particularly well. You reach out to the organizations who are already in the space, doing the work, and see how you can support those organizations rather than take it on as a city of our size with our resources. And so I support the desire and the need to help others that are struggling and suffering. I don't think we should ever turn our back on our neighbors. However, there are certain answers for cities our size, and I'm not sure that this is applicable to us.
Thank you. Colleen?
Thank you. This is a very difficult subject, and Erica's right about the situation in our city being a very small city at this point. Everybody says, "Well, we've been a city for 25 years," and, "Well, we have 13,000 people in our city. We started with nine, so we're growing, but not at an exponential rate, and we are locked by land issues, so we're not going to be able to annex or move out." So I know that in the comprehensive plan, I know there is work to accommodate the current bills in the legislature to allow for these types of housing, the low-income and the extreme-low-income and transitional housing where hotels are allowed. Of course, in Edgewood, we have no hotels at this point, and at this time, we do not have any one that we know of or any company that we know of that wants to come into the city at that level. So there is a lot of work to be done in this area. We may be working with the other cities, as I mentioned before, that are part of a coalition that will be working together to find ways to accommodate the lower-income and extreme-income citizens that need assistance in different ways. So my goal is to help find ways to make that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi?
I agree with everything that's been said thus far. We're a small city with very close proximity to large urban centers, Tacoma and Seattle, that do have large multi-unit properties that are suitable for takeover or purchase to convert to emergency housing and supportive situations. And I believe that that's where those facilities will naturally end up. That's also where the funds for such services are. The ARPA funds, the city funds, the county funds are going to go to the urban center. So I think that Edgewood should do everything we can do in a supportive way with public-private partnerships, working with nonprofits and federal funds. But I really, I agree, I can't foresee situations where we are hosting a large emergency shelter situation here in Edgewood.
Thank you. Josh?
Again, I would echo a lot of those sentiments and say that, yeah, Edgewood, we're a smaller city. We, having those types of things, it would be, we just, I don't know that we necessarily have the capacity for that yet, but on the same terms, I would also say that we need to take a proactive approach and really begin to plan for future growth, and what does that mean? So we would have a plan in place. So working with Pierce County Housing Authority, working with public-private partnerships, working with some of the nonprofits in the area, actually, that is my background, is working in affordable housing with transitional housing, working with a lot of the homeless population. So I feel like I have a lot of expertise and a lot of just knowledge to be able to offer to our city on that subject. And I think just beginning to prepare for, what does it look like if homeless people do come to Edgewood more and more? I would say they probably are already here somewhat. And so what are we going to do as a city to be able to address that as an issue? And with the cities that are surrounding us that do have those transitional housing apartments or locations and emergency housing, what is our, how are we going to transport people to there and work with them, and how are we going to get them to the services that they need?
Thank you. Roseanne?
I would do the same and echo a lot of what
I would do the same and echo a lot of what has already been said. I would add that, that House Bill 1220 has really prompted citizens to reach out to electeds and our, for instance, our Planning Commission, to really learn more about what this means and, and really what it means for our city is updating use codes under our zoning to reflect the allowance. And, and does that, and that's across the board in Washington, be, you know, because of the action of House Bill 1220, which doesn't necessarily mean that we end up getting transitional housing, because as everybody stated, we don't have the infrastructure to support that right now. So there is no, you know, long-term plan in place to have that go. And there are no developers seeking to do that at this time. But I do think it's important that we continue to leverage the space that we do have to have these conversations so that we are facilitating the meeting of these needs with the organizations that are already doing the work to meet those needs and that we are comprehensively aware of the needs before they arise in our community. How, you know, how do we meet these needs regionally? How are we at the table? How do we make sure that, that if that ever does happen in Edgewood, we have the ability to, to provide those services to make sure that we're interconnected with the larger municipalities that, that are really doing the heavy lifting when it comes to transitional housing and additional housing needs?
Thank you. Actually, you gave me a nice introduction. The next question is actually about House Bill 1220. And we'll start with Colleen. And House Bill 1220 requires communities to build projected emergency shelter and housing needs. How should the city of Edgewood expand the ability of indoor emergency shelters and emergency housing in Edgewood? Colleen.
Thank you. I did read through House Bill 1220, did find that there were some issues with Edgewood being the size city that we, we are in and building those facilities. I'm not seeing that as something that would be available in Edgewood. We do have emergency services in Edgewood through several of our churches in the Mountain View Community Center, which has done some really great things with some local fires that have happened and people in need in that respect. As far as the emergency housing, I'm not seeing where that would work. I'm seeing our neighbors being more attuned to that type of service. I know that Kelp City Abbey uses some hotels. And of course, we don't have one, so we can't do that. So there are things that we're going to have to depend on the larger group. And as I mentioned before, the Coalition of Cities looking for these type of openings and opportunities. So I'm going to have to defer to that answer for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi.
1220 makes it so that a city cannot stop or prevent emergency and supportive services. And, and I don't think that's Edgewood's position at all. I think that we will be looking at the need very carefully and looking at the service providers that provide those services, I suspect, over time. And it will, it will be, you know, several years before this is a really hot topic, I believe. And we'll be looking at inner-city agreements and agreements with public-private and agreements with nonprofits who work in this service space and who have this specialty and this expertise. I think it would be unusual, if, if not really a, a bad idea for a city of Edgewood size to launch off on direct services without the budget and the technical expertise to provide those services well.
Thank you. Josh.
Yeah, thank you for that. Again, I would echo a lot of the sentiments. I believe that Edgewood is, is, there is no current plans to, to do this type of housing. I believe that if, if there was a need, we should seriously look at that. And, but again, I would say that we need to have a plan. I work with New Hope Resource Center down here in Puyallup. I work here at, at the Puyallup Food Bank. I've worked in and, and lived in homelessness myself. So I understand a lot of the issues that the homeless population faces. And I believe that we could perform or begin to look at some partnerships with nonprofits as well as other cities who do have that expertise and who also have the capacity. For instance, here at the, the Food Bank, we do not have the other, the resources and services to help people and that are experiencing homelessness. So we actually refer them just down the street to New Hope Resource Center, who has all of the, the services capacities. They have the expertise, they have the skills, they know the resources that they need. I think for Edgewood to take that on prematurely is, is something where we're really not in a state, we're not in the capacity to be able to deal with the many complex issues that people experiencing homelessness face. So I think being able to defer and in the meantime, being to work with places like New Hope Resource Center or, or the city of Puyallup or Tacoma and other cities around who do have more capacity would be a smarter choice for now.
Thank you. Roseanne.
Yeah, I would, you know, of course, agree as well. And I would add that, you know, there, there are many financial and infrastructural limitations for the city of Edgewood. And so a lot of programming in general, community programming, we rely on our community organizations that are doing a lot of that. And, and the important step moving forward is to continue to leverage those connections and make sure that we are providing support in the municipal space for the work that they are doing so that we can make sure that, that when these emergencies are coming up, people have access to resources. So I think it's an ongoing conversation. I would also add that, that the city engages with the Department of Emergency Management as well. In terms of short-term sheltering and stuff for emergency situations, there are opportunities at local churches, even using the city building itself. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to engage to make sure that that services are being met, even if our city is not the, where, where that function is, is being met. We have the authority and the ability to really leverage our space to make sure that the work that other organizations and people are doing are properly funded and supported.
Thank you. Erica.
I agree with the other candidate that this might not be a natural fit for Edgewood to facilitate as a city. However, we can always help to pair people up with the resources that are already available. And just by using, you know, the resources that we have as a city to inform and to reach out to citizens and make them aware. And that's sometimes the best thing that we can do is just to inform people, let them know that there is support available and pair them up with what they need, which is beyond what the city itself is going to be providing.
Thank you. The next question is 60 seconds, Terry. And this question, we will start with Kristi. Only 4% of all the businesses in Edgewood are minority-owned and only 5% are veteran-owned. What is your plan to promote more veteran-owned and minority-owned businesses in Edgewood? Kristi.
Thank you. I think that the city can facilitate the moving around of money to help veterans and minorities start businesses and to be successful in their businesses. There's ARPA money available, there's, there's funding available. But that means that we have to do the outreach to those communities to help them with the resources and help them identify the barriers that are keeping them from a natural entrepreneurial spirit. And I think that it's not something that, again, the city can, can do for them, but the city can facilitate putting veterans and minorities together with the money and the systems that would help them be successful.
Thank you. Josh.
Yeah, I see the, in addition to what Kristi said, providing funding from the city, I think bringing together a group of entrepreneurs, I think that there are business people here in our community that would appreciate being able to mentor and help people of, of varying races and, and backgrounds to be able to come up and, and be an entrepreneur. I, I was an entrepreneur myself, and one of the hardest things in, in starting a business is just trying to do it by yourself. So having other people to help mentor me along the way was, was really, really helpful. And so I, I think that's true for other people as well, as well as reaching out to those people and, and finding ideas. I think my nonprofit that I run, Thrive Center, we would be willing to help bring something like that together. And really just seeing that those people come together and begin to have that discussion to see what is it they want to do and, and how can they grow.
Thank you. Roseanne.
I would, I would add to that to say, you know, our Economic Development Advisory Board is currently doing quite a bit of work to identify what businesses are in Edgewood. We actually have a really large number of home-based businesses. And the reason they're home-based is because we don't have the infrastructure to provide spaces for businesses. And so EDAB is really, you know, trying to connect with who currently has a business, who doesn't, why don't they, what are the barriers? And, and I think that's an opportunity to engage in, in the space as well to pair organizations and businesses with funding opportunities that allow them to expand. But I think that discussion starts at a community level where we are, we are bringing not only landowners in, but we're bringing small business owners in and saying, how can we connect you to a resource that allows you to not only continue in Edgewood, but to grow in Edgewood?
Thank you. Erica.
Well, I am a minority business owner, and I have to agree with what Josh said, that mentorship is really important. I think that for people living within Edgewood to be able to also connect with local business owners would be a great first step. It's also great for the city to kind of promote itself and say, why is it great to operate a business here? You know, why is it great to be able to work where you also live and to be able to employ people that are more tied into a close-knit community such as Edgewood? And how will that actually grow and blossom your business? And I think that this is a really fun topic because you can get really creative when you're promoting businesses and promoting people and growing the community together. And so 15 seconds isn't enough to address it, but I'm really glad that you guys asked this question.
Thank you. Colleen.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about this as well because I think there's so many amazing opportunities to put people together in this. They have the Small Business Administration. We have the Fife Milton Edgewood Chamber of Commerce that is another part of that key functionality that can help people with mentoring and of course, with our current businesses. And we do know that through the Economic Development Board, which I was on for a short time before I was appointed to the city council, I really enjoyed that opportunity to try to connect businesses. We've had a town hall meeting with businesses, landowners, and try to find a way to facilitate the connection between those so that we can get buildings up or business places up to connect small businesses to locations and manufacturing and small manufacturing businesses like that. I'm excited about possible opportunities coming up in the short future with our efforts that we're putting in now.
Thank you. The next question is a 90-second question. And what should the city of Edgewood do to address climate change? And we'll start with Josh. What should the city of Edgewood do to address climate change? Josh?
Well, I think what the city can do is to ensure that we have, have buildings. When, when builders are building, they're building green. And we are ensuring that the houses and what they're using are up to kind of the, the current standards for that, as well as encouraging more bike paths and walk, encouraging walkability in our city. So to take more transportation off, off the road to make our city be able to, where people don't need a car to be able to drive around, where they can walk more. So increasing our sidewalks helps to keep our city green. Also, just ensuring that as, as, as businesses, that we, we have, we have standards in place for them, whether it's, it's, you know, some of the warehouses down in kind of along Valley Avenue or other places that we're, we're ensuring that we're, we're continuing to look at what are the state's guidance and the Department of Ecology for standards and continue to make sure that people are, are meeting standards like that. And then just education, getting out there and letting people know. I think it'd be interesting to work with, with, with Murray's, I think, is, is for our local area and seeing what opportunities they have just in terms of education for trash and recycling and that type of thing as well.
Thank you. Roseanne.
So I think that this, this is a comprehensive issue. And I will say, you know, in our comprehensive plan, there are long-term plans built into that to, for the, the connected trail network for ax, you know, access options that are outside of a car. And, you know, continuing to focus on park spaces and how do we get folks outside and, and doing activities that don't have such a, such an impact. I would also say that, you know, it's very important that we are, again, at the table with organizations that are, that are dealing with the real-time effects of climate shifts. So the Northwest Energy Panel, you know, what are we looking at as the needs increase for development that includes cooling? Our, our current infrastructure is not set up to have so many homes utilizing cooling, which is we, why we saw rolling blackouts when we had that, that, that heat spike. And so these are important things to be at the table for those discussions. And in development, these standards are constantly reviewed. The APA, which I'm a member of, is consistently leveraging the current data to say, how do we update development standards? So we're making sure that not only we're building sustainably, but we're building in a way that allows folks access to infrastructure that they're going to need when we have lower lows and higher highs. So I think it's, again, it's, it's the importance of connecting resources, leveraging and, and making sure we're at the table for all of these regional discussions.
Thank you. Erica.
So I think that, you know, that this has to be a multi-pronged approach. Having better public transportation that's more accessible for people and easier to take is a very important first step for our whole region. I've had the experience of wanting to do the right thing and take the bus down to the train instead of driving into Seattle every day. And you're basically playing Frogger, trying not to get hit by a car when it's dark outside and you're trying to walk to the bus stop. And so we have to think about the idea, but then how is it implicated in real people's lives? And does it work? And always adjusting and changing our expectations to what the reality is. That's just one little example. Having careful zoning laws is another tool that we need to use to make sure that we are able to preserve what open spaces and green spaces that we have. You know, using other cities for examples and trying to get the best of what's working in our general region is another thing that we should always be paying attention to. And this is also a really good area to engage our youth of Edgewood and to have them partner with the city and come in and give us their ideas and get them passionate about protecting the environment at an age where they can actually make a huge impact for all of our future.
Thank you. Colleen.
Oh, thank you very much. I think that climate change has issues that we need to be able to work with on a regular basis. And city of Edgewood has worked on some of that. I know that the city is currently looking at the panels on the side of the building for energy and so forth, the solar panels. And that's a consideration. We've seen several houses being built with the solar panels, finding a way to make that more affordable for people and finding the building standards and allowing that transitional issues and possibly find ways to make it more affordable for those transitions in that. I agree on the transportation issue. I need to, we, if we're going to have bus transit increased and people need to get to that transit, then is there another relay that needs to happen, parking for the cars to get to the transit? I used to have to run for the transit and found that none of the buses connected to the schedule at that time to the transit, to the, to the trains. So you had to drive to the train and there was no option. So I'd love to see more and more options come up. And I love that we have that, the, the pathways and sidewalks and emphasize on trails and bike issues so that we can get safe travel in the city of Edgewood for those people that want to use the bike transit, possibly the way they'd use their bikes through transit instead of having to drive their car. So those are really great opportunities, I think, Edgewood has coming up. And we certainly can study and make those work eventually.
Thank you. Kristi.
I, it's a comprehensive plan that, you know, each of us have hit on pieces of it and, and, and we're all right. It, it takes all of this to make it happen. I think first and foremost, you know, the, the, the biggest bang for the buck on climate change is making Edgewood a place where you can work and play and live, which means that instead of mitigating transportation and energy issues, you simply don't use your car because you work in town. And so coworking spaces and, and designing our town in such a way and our services in such a way that people can work here is first and foremost. A regional comprehensive plan that we full-throatedly endorse is important. I think we should join the Conservation District. I think that we should lean on the, the power that's in Pierce County and King County and, and join the regional plan for climate change. And I And I think that, you know, transportation is obviously an answer. Sustainable homes and, and managing especially cooling expenses is the answer. But it, it takes all of us doing all of this to, to make real changes. And I, I think we should commit as, as individuals and as a city to, to mitigating climate change as much as we can.
Thank you. The next question is 60 seconds and it's everyone's favorite topic. It's congestion. So 60 seconds and we'll start with Roseanne. If elected, what would you do to address traffic congestion? Roseanne?
That, that is, that is a tricky one. We're in a unique spot in Edgewood as well, being the pass through. And I think it's going to get further complicated when we have the, the, the exchange, the 167 exchange and Toll Road and all of that complicates the discussion. I think the most important thing that we keep doing, and I say keep doing because we are, are, we are doing that, is engaging WashDOT in the discussion because in our area in particular, we don't, we don't own Meridian. We don't make decisions on Meridian, WashDOT does. So that really dictates a lot of what the city can do to mitigate traffic. And so I think that the best option is to, you know, be at the table with WashDOT, but also focus really heavily on our arterial road network that allows people to move within the city without getting in those congestion main arterial roads.
Thank you, Erica.
Well, I'll admit, I'm certainly not a traffic engineer. So I don't have perfect answer on this question. But I think that a lot of what Kristi was saying on the last question would apply to this as well of making Edgewood a place where people can also work because you're going to be automatically cutting down on a lot of that traffic if you don't have to go anywhere. I mean, the pandemic brought almost nothing good, but one of the good things that it did bring was that there's a lot more flexibility and people are working from home more often. And so I think that that's something to explore, even expanding, making it even more attractive for people to stay off the road is just one key to that. But really you gotta defer to the professionals to know what they're doing in this space and not necessarily listen to just the public opinion on this topic because it is pretty complicated. And there is a science to all of it.
Thank you, Colleen.
Well, I agree with all of these. They're very good answers. I know that Edgewood is a pass through and we have worked extensively with WashDOT trying to get extra lanes. We'd liked extra lane from 24th all the way down to Fred Meyer, but WashDOT's not willing to talk about that. And the cost is quite extensive. I know that Edgewood has done some studies currently on another access off the hill to see if we could find another way to allow people to move off the hill instead of during rush hour traffic when they get stuck. So there's all kinds of things that we can do to help work through this process. And I hope that we'll be able to find those answers as we move forward in the process of being a city. I just know that congestion can be aggravating. The other one that's, again, I'm going to reiterate my parallel road system mantra because I've really worked hard on keeping that in the system and watching that progress forward and not disappear out of our planning process. So that is another thing I think is important for Edgewood citizens.
Thank you, Kristi.
Sound like a broken record. I agree with everything that's been said thus far. I think that the answer to this question is, is actually the culmination of the entire conversation so far. So when you work more at home, when you, you know, plan your infrastructure better, when you plan your growth better, when you're more attractive to people outside of a bedroom community mentality, then I think that that makes it possible to, to mitigate congestion. I mean, I would walk to Safeway if I could, if I had paths. I would bike if I didn't feel like I was taking my life in my own hands. And I would definitely drive on Colleen's parallel road if it were available to me. So removing local traffic from the Meridian situation, diverting Pualit traffic directly to I-5 through lobbying and political pressure and, and managing money in such a way that these very expensive projects can come to fruition. Those, those are, I think, the, the answers.
Thank you, Josh.
Again, I think a lot of these answers are really good answers. Working with the, like Roseanne said, working with the Washington Department of Transportation and knowing that, because that road is, is not ours. But also I think a lot of that traffic is pass-through traffic. And so keeping people on, on the hill and, and making work and play all available here as much as possible. And then also just increasing our walkability with sidewalks and trails. I lived in Snoqualmie for a little bit and just it had an extensive network of trails all through the city so that we could walk different places and bike different places. And that just in and of, in and of itself builds community in addition to solving the transportation problem. I think definitely increasing public transit, making sure that we have bus stops at places that people can access. I think right now we, we need that as well as just coordinating lights that they would be able when, to, to go through and continue traffic so that there's not those problems.
Thank you. The next question is an audience question, 60 seconds. What is your position on needle exchanges and safe injection sites in Edgewood? Erica?
My position is that I don't support these services in Edgewood. I think that if other larger cities are going to have those programs, that's kind of none of my business. But as far as in Edgewood itself, I don't think that it's appropriate. I think that if resources are going to be used in terms of helping people that have addiction, I think that there are better ways. I think that there are more, well, less controversial ways that we can help people battle addiction. And I just don't feel that this is right for our community. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Colleen.
I agree with Erica that I don't see Edgewood as the right place for this type of service. I see our surrounding cities having more viable systems that would allow them to do this sort of thing. And we're not seeing needles in parks and needles and things and so forth that need this type of service at this time. I'm praying that this does not happen in Edgewood because I would not like to see a needle exchange happen in the city of Edgewood. I think that our other municipalities that are larger than us are better prepared to handle services of this nature.
Thank you, Kristi.
Sorry, unmuted. I, I agree. I don't, I think Edgewood is small enough and its proximity to Tacoma, a major population center, means that I don't think that this is an issue that we'll be facing anytime soon. The, the science is very clear. Clean needles save people's lives, prevent HIV, prevent Hep B. And I think that the needle exchanges that are happening in Tacoma now are very successful. 25% of the needles that Tacoma passes out go to South Pierce County. So good number of those are ending up in Edgewood. However, I don't think that we'll have services like this in Edgewood, but they'll definitely be available in the larger cities for our population if they need.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, I was a former chaplain at Harborview Medical Center where I dealt with people that, that were on the other side of overdosing from addiction. So I've been, I've dealt with this, this issue as well. And I've also even asked former addicts who are now clean and sober and working a full-time job and going to school, what do they think about this issue? And they told me, and I agree with them, that the money is better spent on helping addicts get into a controlled environment where they can be given, given decreasing amounts of Suboxone to be able to get off of their addiction. And so being able to have that as, as an approach, I believe that we should continue to provide, work with nonprofits and supportive services that help the people with addiction and, and really direct our efforts, our time, our efforts and our money there.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Going to sound like a broken record, but I, I agree too that Edgewood is, is again, infrastructurally, financially, not the space where this is going to come to fruition, at least anytime soon. I think where, where we play a role is, you know, providing support, leveraging support for the organizations that are meeting the need of all individuals in surrounding Pierce County area and, and the, the folks that are on the ground addressing the specific needs in terms of addiction and homelessness and, you know, the services that are needed, you know, leveraging them for their expertise, supporting their prop, their programs and, and really just, just leaning in on those conversations. Because Edgewood just isn't going to be the space for this kind of program at least anytime soon.
Thank you. The next question is 60 seconds and this one is about sewers. And we'll, we'll start with Colleen. So putting a sewer connection in costs about $20,000 per property. In addition, there's the cost of connecting properties to a main sewer line. Who should be ultimately responsible to pay off the debt to install sewers and sewer connections in new development? Property owners or ratepayers? Colleen?
Well, I think that you're going to start in developments and the developments will pay for development. That's been the standard in the city of Edgewood. And so if you're developing a, a property and you're putting in sewers, then that goes with the development. If you're moving it into the neighborhoods, like where I used to live, then the citizens would have to buy into that sewer project. And so it'd be so much per foot or whatever. And for those that weren't able to be able to do that, let's say there was a new development next to you and they brought in sewers and you had somebody down the street and they wanted sewers. Possibly we could stub out the ones before that and the ones that want it can have it now and the other ones would buy in later. So there's a lot of different ways of handling the sewer system and sewer issues. And I think the city's considering these and being very proactive on all the options of how that can happen. Like one of my discussions is if we're going to do the sewers, let's do the sidewalks at the same time, maybe even the streetlights so we can get it all done at the same time. Yes, it costs more, but it may be more efficient in the long run.
Thank you. So who should be ultimately responsible to pay off the debt to install sewers and sewer connections in new development? Property owners or ratepayers? Kristi?
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
Who should be ultimately responsible to pay off the debt to install sewers and sewer connections in new development? Property owners or ratepayers?
The city has a long-term com- com- comprehensive plan to bring sewers to Edgewood and it's in phases. I think that the, the way that it gets paid for depends on the situation. I mean, if there's a, you know, my house has a housing development across the street. I am on septic. And when they bring sewer next door, I could choose to voluntarily opt into that nearby sewer system. I think that dictating who pays for it isn't something that's easy because each situation is going to be different. But I think ultimately, when the entire city is, is hooked up to sewer systems, individual homeowners will have to pay for stubs in, in some instances and, and that's the reality.
Josh?
Yeah, I, I think, so I live in a, in a new development and we're actually on the Fife sewer system. We pay a lot of extra money because of it and it's, it's unfortunate. But I, I think, yeah, I would love to see the sewer system grow. I think that's one of the things that we need for infrastructure. I think like Colleen said, that as new development happens, they should include it in, in that development. But also if people want to opt in and then that they should be able to opt in and that should be a, a decision that, that, that people make. I also would, would want to look and, and work with businesses to see what are their needs in, in terms of sewer. And so I really think that it is something that it's a complex issue. It's a case-by-case issue. And really working with people, bringing people to the table, whether that's residents, whether that's businesses, that is the way we kind of approach that issue.
Thank you, Roseanne.
It is a very complex issue. The city actually is coming up on a, on a full comprehensive sewer review. And I think we're going to learn a lot more through that process. Historically, it has relied on development, infrastructure and, and making that connection to sewer services that are currently available. I think that, that how we proceed is, is really going to depend on the situation, on each situation. But it is important to have that access. We know the, the public health concerns with, with septics and the cost of septics. Septic failures are, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 that families have to address. And so either way, there's a cost. I think it's just going to be important to really look at the data, look what's worked in other municipal spaces and, and have a firm plan that, that shares the community's needs.
Erica?
I think that the question was specifically asking about new developments. And so in a new development, that is a cost that you're kind of aware of as you're buying into it, that you're going to have to pay extra. In my previous home, I had to pay a lot extra because of it being a new development. My brother's probably a neighbor of Josh because he lives in a new development in Edgewood that pays a lot of money to Fife for his sewer also. And so I think that's pretty established. I think that the, the concerns of residents in existing homes being told that they're going to have to connect at a very high cost is something that's going to be a really long-term conversation to ease people into it and to, you know, really explore ways of tackling that cost for people. And so I think that that might be one of our future questions. I'm not sure. Just predicting that.
Oh, you, you are just absolutely clairvoyant. Okay. This next question is 90 seconds. All development within the city of Edgewood must provide adequate sanitary waste disposal method, either through a public sanitary sewer connection or a private onsite septic system. Please speak to the compatibility between current zoning boundaries and sewer service boundaries, community onsite septic system allowances and long-term feasibility of the sewer system extension requirements for new development. And we'll start with Kristi on this one.
It's, again, it's an, an extension of the previous question. Right now we have multiple different situations. We do have a sewer system that, that takes sewage to federal way oddly, not, not downhill, but, but uphill. And, you know, we have a myriad of different ways to deal with sewage. Some individual septic systems, some, you know, communal. And I think that, you know, over the long term, all of these will coalesce over decades into a full municipal sewer system. And it's, it's a public health issue. We don't have good perk here, which means that septic systems aren't actually the most optimum. We have surface water issues here. So I, I think that municipal sewer system on a large scale covering all of Edgewood is an eventuality. And it's going to take us decades and lots of money to get there. And we'll do it carefully and intentionally with, with full zoning.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, I, again, I, I think it's a, it's, it's been on a case-by-case issue, but I think it's really important that we bring people together on this, that we listen to people's opinions, that we really get good feedback. Again, bringing people to the table, bringing businesses to the table. This is something that is going to be a citywide issue. It's something we're going to have to address. And I think we're going to have to move towards a municipal sewer system. And that's just one of the costs. It's going to be costly. But I think the, the payoff of it in the long term is really going to be worth it because I believe it's going to create a better city infrastructure for us to continue to develop and grow and to be able to support more people, more businesses here in, in Edgewood. And I think like Roseanne mentioned, with septic systems, you do get, it, it might be cheaper in the, the short term, but longer term, it can be very, very expensive to have that septic system. So I think long-term, it's going to be something that's going to be better. But it's just going to mean we're going to have to bite the bullet and be able to, to make that, that payment.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Particularly with this situation, as council members, we really have to engage with our planning commission. And so, you know, the, the planning commission is, does a lot of really great work. Heavy lifting of, you know, comprehensive review of potential changes, zoning changes, legislative changes that, that may come down the road so that council can make a educated, you know, response to those needs. And so one of the things that's loosely tied to this conversation is their ongoing discussion of, do we allow properties that are developing that are close to the current system to allow, to build drain systems, you know, shared drain systems? Or do they have to tie in? And those conversations have to be had. And those conversations have to be had in a case by case basis and have to have the long-term goals in mind for the city because we do have complicated issues with our soil structures and we have situations where septic systems are underwater. And so how do you, how do you leverage our, our zoning capabilities and our access capabilities to make sure that, that we're getting that service to those who need it? And also making requirements consistent so that our long-term goals are met when development does come in.
Thank you, Erica.
I think that the end result is something that everybody can really get behind and probably isn't too controversial, but it's the pain of getting there that's hard for people. And one of the things that city government can do is to be very open and to allow the constituents to have their voices heard so that people aren't feeling like the end result is being shoved down their throat, but they're more being guided towards something that's mutually beneficial. You know, if, if everybody can see what it's going to look like at the end and why this is actually better for our city in the long term, then it makes it easier to take those incremental steps toward making this a change. And so I think it's just a matter of having a really good relationship with the people that we want to serve. And knowing that there's going to be valid concerns and that we have to let them speak those concerns and kind of guide them.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yes, this is a very complicated question with a very complicated type of answer based on all that you've heard. We can, you can tell that we all understand that this situation is not an easy one to address. We have many, many HOAs with septic systems. Most have never failed. We did have one failure that took out Jovita and took a long time to get fixed. And some people were not happy that in the bottom line of their HOA agreement that if that failed, they had to pay for three pairs. It's very expensive. So those are the kind of things we see happening, not we haven't seen anything happen like that since then. There's been a lot of very careful planning on how those systems are set up. And the health department has a huge impact on how those things work. So working with a septic system, sewer system, I know that Fife is, we worked on an interlocal agreement with Fife when one of our citizens called and said, did you know we're getting this service charge on here? No. So we did some work on that and got an interlocal agreement with Fife and reduced the payments. I realize they're still a little high, but those are the kind of things we're always looking at. This sewer system and sewer questions and solutions through the planning department, through the health department and through the interlocal agreements we have with other cities, just to receive the wheeling of this product to them. So we, we are working really hard. And I know that as Roseanne noted, that we're got a lot of stuff coming up and we're going to learn a lot. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. This is the last question and it is sixty seconds. Terry? What are your plans and priorities to increase access to green space and parks in Edgewood? And we'll start with Josh. What are your plans and priorities to increase green space and parks in Edgewood?
Yeah, so I think it's important that we again have the walkability in Edgewood, that we would be able to have sidewalks and begin to, to continue. And we've already started, the, the city of Edgewood has already started sidewalks along Twenty-fourth. I believe it's important that we continue that. The, Edgewood has a new park going in and I think there's going to be real difficulty with traffic speeding up Meridian up, up the hill there. So we need to make sure that when people want to cross either into the park or out of the park, that, that we have something to help slow that traffic down or really good signage, crosswalks so that people are able to access that park. Because that's going to be something a lot of people are going to want to, to attend. Again, I lived in Snoqualmie, there were parks in every neighborhood. It really worked very well. I would love to see more smaller parks around the neighborhoods. So each, each kind of community felt like it had. I think large parks are great too. But I, I do think having parks where people are able to walk to little, the little parks is, is also good as well.
Thank you, Roseanne.
This is another comprehensive issue. So I think it's multifaceted. I think it's important that we continue with our development standards that, that really require developers to build pocket parks and, and those all fold into our existing park infrastructure. But even with the new park and the, the pocket parks coming in, we are still behind our the need for park space. And so I think it needs to be a very intentional searching for parcels that can be acquired, even just for passive open space. There are some conversations, you know, about that consistently happening at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which I connect with monthly. And I think it's important to, again, I know I say engage, 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 but continue to engage in that space because I think our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board really helps us leverage opportunities to build that park infrastructure.
Thank you, Erica.
I think that as far as the parks that we already do have, one of the best things that we can do is to help our residents fall in love with those spaces. You know, not everybody is even aware of what we are, already have within Edgewood. I was talking to a neighbor not that long ago, talking about how I love going to the Nelson Nature Park. I think that's what it's called. You know, or Nature Preserve with my family. And people aren't necessarily aware of those cute little places that we already have. So I think that one thing we can do is just to highlight all the rich resources that we already have in Edgewood to encourage people to have the desire to see more of it. And then you get the residents behind ideas like what Roseanne was saying of acquiring new green spaces and having city-owned parks or just city-owned spaces that aren't going to be developed. And that would be just a beautiful thing.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yes, I know that parks are something that we all dearly love. We love the equipment. We love the children playing. Accessibility is extremely important and we're always looking for best ways to do that. I remember when I was on the council in years past, we put a map up into a circle around where we wanted parks. And we just about got those except for we left off the west side, which is unfortunate. In the years since then, the west side now has developments and little pocket parks, but not that really nice park that we had hoped those many years ago to be able to put there. So what I want to see is trails to the parks and interconnectivity between the schools and the parks. Because I think that's so important that they're identified and that they're safe for people to use. And especially the nature park. I know that we do the Friends of the Park sale every year at the nature park. And I'm always surprised how many people have never been there before, never walked T's Trail, was dedicated to T Hollingsworth. Because if, it wouldn't be paved if it wasn't for her. And so we just want to thank all the people that have worked in that process to get where we're at.
Thank you, Kristi.
Well, I think you should elect us all because we, we all comprehensively together have the right answers. Pocket parks, acquiring new land is, is really where the, the trouble begins though. If we want parks and we are going to commit as a community to green spaces and parks, then we've got to talk about how we're going to fund that. And that means looking at our comprehensive plan and deciding that we're going to spend the money to buy land. And that's a very big topic. And it's a tough one to talk to the community about because when you spend that money for parks, that money comes out of some other side of the budget. So I think this comes down to, like Erica said, helping people fall in love with our green spaces, committing as a community to the cultural commitment to parks and green spaces. And again, I'll pound this drum one more time, joining the conservation district so that we can help change our culture to love green spaces and parks.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We'll change the order of the opening statements. So we'll start with, it'll be, it will be Erica, Colleen, Kristi, Josh, and then Roseanne. So Erica, your closing statement, please.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the League of Women Voters. I've really enjoyed being able to talk to the constituents in Edgewood today. I hope that you have heard enough to consider learning more about me, reaching out to me, writing me. I write everybody back who emails me. And I really feel passionate that this is a great place to live. The best part of Edgewood are the people here. And I think that by joining together and inviting everybody into the decision-making process and taking the best of the resources that we have here, which are our people, we can get amazing decisions that will protect the future for the next generation and the next. And we don't have to worry about change in Edgewood as long as that change is going in the right direction. So please reach out. I love to hear from you and I would love your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Colleen.
Well, first of all, thank you for having this wonderful forum. It's so, so helpful for our citizens to be able to hear from their current council members and candidates as well. And I appreciate being a candidate. It's always a very interesting process. And I, I also appreciate people contacting me and helping solve problems that we have on a sometimes daily, weekly basis that we saw pop up on the Edgewood Cooler and other places. Rather fun to help with those things. And I really feel like I'm qualified to handle it with the experience that I've had over the last several years. I so appreciate the citizens that have stepped up to serve on the various different committees, which I listen in on very frequently. And the difficulties that they're trying to deal with and to solve problems in Edgewood. I'd be really honored for the vote of the citizens of Edgewood. I'd like our community to continue to grow in a directed and conservative way as possible. And really appreciate all people's participation in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you. You can find more information about me at Keith for Council. I'm on Facebook. You can call, you can email. I, I do Zooms with constituents. So any questions you have, be sure to reach out. I think that the, the challenges in front of, of, of Edgewood are scary for some people. But I think the way to, to solve that concern is to get involved, to get involved with your council, know what's going on. Get involved. And so you can be part of the answer. So I think being involved in, in city government makes me feel less powerless. So I, I have less worries. And, and I think that you should vote for the candidate that most meets your values and your goals and get involved with your city. Engage.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thank you to the Women Voters for hosting this and for all the candidates and being here and just your amazing ideas. And I just, I love Edgewood. It's an amazing place to live. I'm going to continue to raise my kids there and continue to be here. And we're so excited to be a part of this community. And we want to continue to see that sense of community grow. So I believe that I can use my twenty-five years of nonprofit leadership experience, as well as my experience in government and in HOAs to continue to build community. I have a lot of ideas that I would love to, to put on and to a lot of events and programs. There's things I'm going to be doing through Thrive Center, a nonprofit that I've started and, and I'm running. And I'm really excited about that. But I really look forward to getting to know the people around. Please, please get in touch with me. My, my website is joshshulkindforedwoodcouncil.org. And I would love your vote. Please get in contact with me. You can find my contact information there. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Yes, thank you to the Women Voters for hosting this and for all the community members that are in the audience, including the folks who will watch this later. And I wanted to call out how amazing it is that we're having more candidates. Historically in Edgewood, there, there have been uncontested seats. The majority of seats were uncontested. And so I think it's a wonderful thing that we have highly capable candidates that all want to serve. We're seeing more interest in our boards and commissions where, you know, this, this is the perfect part of, of growing. This is the positive part where we're getting more people involved. And I've been consistently engaged, you know, with all of our boards and commissions. I believe that council members should be available to you, the community outside of the, you know, city hall and meeting times. And so please don't hesitate to reach out anytime. And I hope to have the opportunity to continue doing the work that I love. Thank you.
Thank you all. In ballot order, the candidates for Edgewood Council are for position three, Kristi Keith and Joshua Shulkind. For position four, Roseanne Tomlin and Rick Winifred. For position six, Erica Buckley and Colleen Wise. You all should, you all should receive your ballot by October eighteenth. Be sure to vote early and no later than November second. I would like to thank all the candidates who participated, the Timekeeper Terry Baker, Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters and our community sponsors. The Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, South End Neighborhood Council, Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see other League of Women Voters candidate forums at www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Read your voter's pamphlet and look at vote411.org. That's vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posted to all candidates running for office. Make sure to read the candidates' websites and do all that you can to be an educated voter. And please don't forget to vote before November second. Thank you all and have a great evening. Bye-bye.